Call to order, the regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. Commissioner Riddle is present by video. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item this evening will be the swearing in of our newest Commissioner, Commissioner Russ Murphy. This will be administered by City Administrator Dossinger.
Mr. Murphy, would you please raise your right hand? Aye, State Attorney Dan.
Aye, Russ Murphy.
Of Dickinson, North Dakota.
Of Dickinson, North Dakota.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And the most faithfully discharged duties of the office of City Commissioner.
And I would faithfully administer the Office of City Commission.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Our next item this evening is the Order of Business. Mr. Dossinger, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. There is a change to the Order of Business this evening underneath the number eight public hearing, five o'clock. Item A, the public hearing for Scout Energy Well, a recommendation will be removed from the agenda and put on a future Commission meeting agenda.
Any questions on the removal of the Scout public hearing? Now I look for a motion.
Move to approve?
We have a motion to approve the amended Order of Business removing the Scout public hearing by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the amended Order of Business? Please signify approval by stating aye.
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 No same sign, motion carries. We'll move into consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that Commissioners wish to discuss? Now I look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move into administration and finance. This is the official results of the special commission election. Mr. Dossinger?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. Earlier today, the City of Dickinson canvassing board met, reviewed, and certified the final election results. The official election results are as follows. Five hundred and twenty-nine votes were cast for Russ Murphy, one hundred and seventy-five votes were cast for Matthew Rothstein, one hundred and six votes were cast for Amber Warner, sixty-five votes were cast for Dean Plouver, and one vote was cast for a write-in candidate. So there was a total of eight hundred and seventy-six votes cast in this election. No action is needed, it's for informational purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. We'll move right into item B, the RFP for appraisal services for city property. Mr. Dossinger?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. The City of Dickinson owns three parcels of land that may be considered for future sale, development, or other public purposes to ensure accurate valuation and transparency. Staff recommends soliciting professional appraisal services for three identified parcels. If approved, the City of Dickinson would be requesting proposals from qualified, certified real estate appraisal professionals to provide independent appraisal services for the three parts of land owned by the city. These appraisals are being sought to support potential sale or other public use decisions. The three parcels requiring appraisal services are legally described as follows. Lot one, block one of the Prairie Meadows subdivision, which is approximately thirteen point two-nine acres located west of the Dickinson Middle School. Lot two, block one, the Museum Center Edition, which is, the address is forty-six West Museum Drive. It's approximately one point one-six acres and is the armory site. The third parcel is lot one, block one of the Museum Center Edition. The address on this is sixty-six West Museum Drive, approximately three point nine-three acres, and it's the land in which the current Dickinson LEC exists. City staff recommends approval and moving forward with the RFP for appraisal services.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on this RFP for city property? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Dossinger, we have a public safety sales tax discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. Today I'm looking for a discussion from the city Commissioners and some guidance if they would like to move forward with the public safety tax for our community. To start out, I kind of wanted to just kind of give you a snapshot of what our current sales tax allocation looks like. Sales tax is six and a half percent in the City of Dickinson, five percent which goes to the state sales tax, and one and a half percent goes to the city sales tax. And you can kind of see on above a screen there kind of gives you an indication of where we sit at as far as taxes based on municipalities within our various communities in North Dakota and the sales tax by municipalities. You can see that we're sitting at six and a half percent, that is the lowest rate of any of the municipalities in our region. I also like to point out that some of these cities also have a county sales tax that's also applied. For example, if you were purchasing an item at Shields, you would have a seven percent total municipal tax, but it'd also be a one percent additional county tax that you're paying as well. So it would be eight percent. There are several cities that have a county tax that coincides. For example, Fargo has a half percent county tax on top of that. Morton County has a one percent as well, and Williston has, of course, a one percent public safety tax on top of that in Williams County. So that would be an eight percent tax for Williston residents. Kind of a potential breakdown of that one percent public safety tax. Eighty percent of all revenues collected under this resolution shall be allocated to the City of Dickinson for the sole purpose of funding public safety operations and infrastructure, including but not limited to personnel, equipment, facilities, technology, and capital improvements. Twenty percent of all revenues collected under this resolution shall be allocated to Stark County for the sole purpose of funding public safety operations and infrastructure, including but not limited to personnel, equipment, facilities, technology, and capital improvements. Just kind of give you a snapshot, you know, moving forward, looking at a proposed 2026 budget, you know, we're looking alone as far as the fire budget, we're looking at approximately a three point six-three million dollar budget next year. Police, we're looking at approximately about a nine point five-three million dollar budget, and EMS, we're projecting about a two point six-six million dollar budget. So in 26, the city is going to be responsible for approximately fifteen point eight-two million dollars of the general fund, which can be applied to public safety in our community. Keeping in mind that approximately, we're anticipating approximately six million dollars in property tax collection in 2026 if the budget is approved. Of that, there's a tax levy that goes directly to the library and the airport, which you have to subtract approximately one point, almost one point three million dollars from that six million dollars. So it leaves us with approximately about four point seven million dollars of property tax that would be applied to the general fund to cover public safety costs. But at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the Commission to provide me with some guidance, some staff, some guidance as far as how, if you would like to move forward with this public safety tax.
Before I ask Commissioners, just a quick question for the general public. This would be, if we pass this by resolution as a city commission, this would be placed on the ballot in the next, in June primary of next year. Am I correct?
That is correct.
And then that will be ultimately up to the people to decide if this is the direction we should go as a city. And thank you for the breakdown of dollars. It is increasingly difficult, not only just manning the individuals, keeping up with the equipment as our inventory of vehicles age. I think in, we're already anticipating replacing one, another fire engine for another one point five million dollars. And we run these fire engines almost thirty years, if I'm correct, you know, so, but it's our time and they come due. And I know Commissioner Murphy, he's our newest Commissioner, but he has a little bit of history running around on those fire trucks. And it seems like we have to replace one every two, three years since I've been on the Commission, and every one of them's a million dollars, you know. So this isn't getting any cheaper to do business, and we have to look at some of our infrastructure too, what we're operating now for ambulance and fire, and then potentially additional police officers as going forward as the city grows.
I believe a new ambulance was about a half a million too.
Just short of a half a million, if I'm correct. New ambulance, and we bought two of them, right?
Three, three, three and a half.
Three hundred and fifty thousand, yeah, for a new ambulance, so. So I'll open it up, so that was just kind of my question, what the process would be if we passed the, in the coming months, if we passed the resolution placing that on the ballot, it would ultimately come down to the public and that would be the June primary, so. Commissioners, any questions for city staff?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Baer?
Mr. Dossinger, just for clarification for the public, this does not include the cost of dispatching an ambulance to a residency and then transporting them to the hospital, correct?
That is correct. If you needed ambulance services, you would still be billed for it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Riddle, any questions?
No, nope. I kind of had the same question Dr. Baer did, and it's been answered, so.
All right, thank you. Again, this was just for discussion purposes. In my opinion, go ahead.
What are we roughly taking on one percent, do you know?
Around, approximately about seven million.
I'm sorry, right around approximately about seven million dollars in one percent.
About seven million go a long ways toward that fifteen million public safety cost that we have.
And then, you know, a portion of it going to Stark County too, to help them offset their costs, you know?
Yeah, so twenty percent of that seven million go to them, but.
You know, I'm expecting a hearty increase with, every time I drive by TJ Maxx, I appreciate everybody shopping there, you know? And then, you know, Hobby Lobby will be opening too, so that'll be collection. And by implementing a sales tax, the one thing that I think is the fairest to our residents is a lot of the individuals that are going to be passing through in the future will be able to collect off the tourism going to Midora. Those individuals also use our services, even though they are not residents here. And not only the City of Dickinson, the county, the sheriff, and their services, the smaller communities around here, they also respond to fires, they respond to ambulance calls in that district over by Richardson. The Sheriff's Department's got to, you know, police the whole county, so collecting from all those travelers, to me, is just one of the fairest things that we can do for our citizens here in Dickinson. So, I mean, in my opinion, I think we need to bring forth that resolution so we can place it on the ballot next year.
I would agree. I think that it's, you can see other municipalities have done this around the state, and I think it's something that we should bring to the people and see what they think of it, and hopefully we can get, help get in this past and help take some pressure off the budget we have currently, so.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Murphy?
Mr. Dossinger, can you clarify for individuals what items will not be affected by a sales tax? I think that might help.
Yeah, I don't have, I guess I don't have a list in front of me, but certain things like agricultural products would not be.
Vehicles.
Vehicles, that type of stuff would not be affected by our use.
Groceries, I don't think there's any.
So I mean, just to clarify that, there are certain things that would be excluded from.
Staple groceries, no, none of the, you know, like pop and candy is taxed and things like that, but your staple groceries.
Milk, bread, butter.
Medicine is not, not affected by it.
So there are items that, you know, just for clarification, people wouldn't be affected.
And the city collects no sales tax on a car. There is zero collected. There is only five percent charged on a car, and that goes directly to the state. We get nothing from a car, a car sale in the City of Dickinson, so.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no further questions, we'll move into the ABM contract renewal. This will be handled by IT Director Meyer.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. Before you, I have the ABM contract printer renewal, which is for three of the printers that we have at the Public Safety Center. It's a five-year contract. We anticipate that over the life of this contract, it'll be about a ninety-dollar per year savings on the renewal of this equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Is it replacing the equipment or just renewing the service contract?
No, it's a replacement of the equipment on that five-year.
Are there any other questions on the ABM contract renewal? Now I look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Meyer, you have an RFP bid award for immovable backup storage?
I do. Thank you again, Commissioners. The, in October of last year, we submitted for a grant through the cybersecurity grant program that the state and the Fed puts on. We did receive that award as of June this year. We went out for bid, we received six bids back. We are rejecting the low bid because they didn't meet three of the specs, but accepting the second lowest bidder, which will be TruNAS, and we are accepting their option to their hybrid unit at a hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred rough dollars. The city shares roughly about thirty-four thousand, and the feds will pick up about seventy-nine thousand on that project.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any questions for Mr. Meyer on the backup storage?
Is this a one-time?
This is, so it's a one-time hardware, and then it's got a five-year support contract with it as well, already built into this cost.
Any other questions for Mr. Meyer? If there aren't, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Baer?
Second.
Second.
Well, I'll give Mr. Riddle that, he's got that time delay in the combine there. Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further questions? There are no questions, we'll go ahead and vote. Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Public Works. We have a water reclamation facility manager job description. This will be handled by Deputy Public Works Director Waldo.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and Commissioners. For your consideration tonight, I have a job description and a request to advertise for a WRF manager position. This request is both to approve the job description for the water reclamation facility manager and, excuse me, I messed up on the PowerPoint, there we are, and to proceed with advertising our intent to fill this position. The role of this position is to provide direct oversight to facility staff and to facilitate the ongoing development of a comprehensive preventative maintenance program to ensure facility equipment and grounds are maintained to the highest standard into the future. While this position has been vacant for three years and was not included in the 2025 budget, it is the recommendation of Public Works staff to return this position to our organization to ensure the continued success of our water reclamation facility. This position will require formal education in related field, as well as considerable experience working in a mechanical treatment plant in a supervisory capacity, and will be advertised at a grade PW nineteen, which is equal to other management level positions within Public Works. This job description has been reviewed by HR and Public Works, and staff recommends
Thank you, Mr. Waldo. Any questions on this job description and request to advertise?
Mr. Waldo, do you know, are there applicants out there? I mean, what's, you feel that this will be widely?
So, to be frank, sir, I don't think it's going to be, I don't think somebody's just going to jump right out at us. I think this is a very particular caliber of candidate that we're going to be looking for. As far as how long it's going to take to fill, I think, you know, it could be a couple of weeks, it could be a handful of months, there's no way for me to really accurately speculate that. But I know that getting the, getting the right individual into this position is going to be crucial, so we're going to be pretty choosy when it comes to that.
Possibility of internal applicants at all?
Minimal, I would say.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for city staff? Now I look for a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Murphy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners, have a good night.
We'll move into community development. We have Tenth Avenue East, Museum Drive to Twenty-first Street, DWR letter of support. This will be handled by Engineering Community Development Director Skolczek.
Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. For your consideration, is a Department of Water Resources letter of support for the Tenth Avenue East project from Museum Drive to Twenty-first Street East. This project was specifically included on the 2025 through 2027 DWR water development plan, which increases the probability of success of this grant being awarded. In this case, being a municipal water supply, cost share maximum is sixty percent through the DWR, which would leave the remaining forty percent for the City of Dickinson. On the map, I showed there's a red line which indicates where we would replace the existing water main with new PVC water main. Our estimates currently show approximately total eligible amount of, for the grant would be about two hundred and eighty thousand, and the cost share estimate for the City of Dickinson would be about a hundred and eighty thousand. And both construction and construction engineering costs are eligible for this cost share item. City engineering staff recommends approval. With this segment of roadway, we do plan to submit for the North Dakota DOT Flex Fund for the remainder of the project, and so ultimately this will be picking up a small share of that remainder of the project. So with that, engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Skolczek. Any questions on the Tenth Avenue Museum Drive? Letter of support. If there are none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Skolczek, you got the Fifth Street Water Main Extension, DWR letter of support.
Good evening again, Mr. President and Commissioners. For your consideration, is a Department of Water Resources letter of support for the Fifth Street Southeast. This is from Highway twenty-two to Sixth Avenue Southeast project. This was capital improvement project 2024-17. Project here is anticipated to extend approximately six hundred and seventy lineal feet of new eight-inch PVC water main. The extent of, the extension of this will, will make a connection from Sixth Avenue Southeast into the existing water main within Fifth Street Southeast and loop our existing water main infrastructure. In this case, this is also included on the 2025 through 2027 water development plan through the state, which increases our probability of success of being awarded the grant, and ultimately, city engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Skolczek. Any questions on this water main extension? If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Baer?
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And before the public hearing here, we'll see if we can get the clarifier gearbox improvements done. Senior Engineer Keller.
Commissioners, for your approval, is a proposal from Clearstream Environmental to provide material installation for the drive gearbox, safety stairway, and access planning for both final clarifiers at the water reclamation facility. A Clearstream representative was on-site to validate the equipment and installation measurements for the clarifier arms approved at the August fifth meeting. While on-site, the representative was asked to conduct additional inspections on the drive mechanism, that's the gearbox for those clarifier arms, and the representative noted that the gearbox was in need of a mid-life overall. There were two options identified. One is refurbishment while the clarifier was, was being maintained by adding new arms, or replace the gearbox. Those were the two options. The Public, the Public Works and Engineering Departments determined that the replacement is the preferred alternative due to material upgrade, improved reliability, and project timing. The representative also indicated that improved access for gearbox maintenance was possible with the proposed deck rating. Also on-site, the representative noticed the access method that the operators used to inspect the clarifier was, was quite frankly, dangerous, and that a retractable staircase that is included in this proposal was the preferred method. The current method involves use of a man basket with a portable crane. While this is an accepted industrial practice, the staircase provides a While this is an accepted industrial practice, um, the staircase provides a significantly safer, um, improvement. Uh, this proposal does include, uh, equipment drawings, operation and maintenance manuals, material logistics, and installation with coordinated support from WRF staff. The gearbox is expected to last for 30-plus years. Uh, this contract is for $186,625 on a fixed price basis. The funding will, will, for this will come from cash on hand. Uh, the city attorney has reviewed the contract, and city engineering staff, uh, recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any questions for Mr. Keller on this gearbox replacement?
Mr. President?
Commissioner Riddle?
Mr. Keller, hey, on a new gearbox versus a refurbished, what's the difference in the warranty period on it?
Uh, there was, uh, no warranty on the refurbished parts, sir.
Okay, and then what, what is it on a new gearbox?
I don't know the exact, uh, timeframe, but it, it is, um, it is warranted for craftsmanship and installation since the city won't, will not be doing the work themselves. I can, I can, uh, I can follow up with you on that, uh, on that warranty period.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Any other questions for Mr. Keller? Not, I'd look for a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Ms. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, we're gonna move into the 5 o'clock public hearing. According to our amended agenda this evening, we'll move right to Item B, the public hearing for amendment to Chapter 4. This will be handled by City Attorney Wanko and City Administrator Dossinger.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President and Members of the Commission. Before you this evening is an amendment and reenactment of Section 4-48 of our municipal code. Uh, this is in reference to a bidding deadline, uh, to our concession sta, to our Legacy Square concession license. Uh, currently, Section 4-48 of our municipal code requires a deadline for the bidding process to be set prior to October 1st of, uh, each year for the Legacy Square concession license. Um, city staff recommends amending the bidding process deadline from October 1st to November 15th. The reason for this would be to allow city staff to, to have the opportunity to solidify, uh, dates for events at Legacy Square, and hopefully have, uh, potential entertainment solidified with those dates prior to going out to the bidding, uh, process.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions for Mr. Dossinger? This will be ordinance 1826. This would be the amendment of our bidding process for Legacy Square, moving it back from October 1st to November 15th, which I, I do think is the right thing to do so we can, we can get this lineup for next year going, and, uh, uh, possible bidders will have a, a better idea of what, um, entertainment will be at Legacy Square next summer. Are there any other comments or questions? Not, I'd look for a motion. Oh, excuse me, I got a public hearing first. If there are no, no questions, Commissioners? Okay. No questions, I'll open up the public hearing. If anyone wishes to come forward, please state your name. Come forward and let us know if you have any concerns or questions for the city commission. Anyone from the public? Anyone have any concerns on us amending the bid date for Legacy Square? Seeing no one has any questions or concerns, I will close the public hearing. Now, I'd look for a motion if there are no more questions from Commissioners.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item, we have a public hearing for the amendment to Chapter 6. And this will be presented by City Attorney Wanko.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. Uh, this will be one of three that you'll be hearing this evening. I do have quite a few. It's not as many as engineering, but, uh, I do have, I have three, so we'll get going on this one. This one is a Chapter 6-39 Code Amendment. Uh, very simple, nothing extremely, uh, complex with this. Uh, but we are moving to amend and reenact Section 6-39. Basically, what it's going to do, it's going to clearly state within that code section the violation for running at large, which is a $50 administrative fine. We have discovered over the years how we have our code have a, a specific section, and then the violations and the penalties for those sections are found elsewhere in the code. And so this is just kind of a, a way to bring that all together, so it's easily accessible and easy to follow when you're reading the code. So, um, I recommend approval, and I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wanko. Any questions for Ms. Wanko on the amendment to Chapter 6, which is running at large, and this would be ordinance 1827? Commissioners, any questions? The commission has no questions. I will open up the public hearing. Does anyone from the public have any questions on the amendment to Chapter 6, the running at large, Section 6-39? Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public with any concerns? Anyone from the public have any questions? Close the public hearing. Again, this is ordinance 1827, reenact Section 6-39, which clearly states the amount of fine for the violation of running at large. If there are no more questions from the commission, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Murphy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Ms. Wanko, you have an amendment to Chapter 58?
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. This is a code amendment for Chapter 58-4. Again, nothing, uh, super complex with this, but what we are seeking to do is amend and reenact Section 58-4. We're seeing some changes, uh, when we adopted MuniCode, uh, earlier this year. Some of the vernacular and some of the terminology in our code sections have changed. And so, this change is to essentially revert it back to what our city clerks and our law enforcement officers are used to. As far as this change is concerned, the code section with the switch to MuniCode identifies it as the issuance of a warrant, where we are, in the old version, um, called that a failure to comply. And so, this is just changing the actual just title of the code section. It's not changing any of the, um, specific, uh, code language, but it's just a title change. So, uh, I would recommend approval and stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wanko. This is ordinance 1828, which is amends and reenacts Section 58-4 in our, um, let me get this correct here, the, uh, Chapter 58. Any questions for Ms. Wanko? There are no questions, I'll open up to the public. This is ordinance 1828, which amends Chapter 58, and reenacts Section 58-4 for the issuance of a warrant for failure to comply. Anyone from the public have any questions or concerns? Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public have any questions or concerns on the Chapter 58 amendment and reenaction to Section 58-4 for failure to comply? Seeing no one has any questions or concerns, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further discussion? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And our last public hearing was an amendment to Chapter 58-100. This will be ordinance 1829. Ms. Wanko?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this, uh, ordinance in front of you is a proposal. Uh, it is in response to House Bill 12, excuse me, 1298, which adjusted fines for speeding violations. Uh, what it will do, uh, it will remove our prior fine system, and it will replace it with the language that's identified in this code section. Uh, I did just notice that the PDF ordinance in your packet, when I PDF'd it, it took out the chart. Uh, so you don't see that in your version, but I'll have Ms. Binstock send that out to you. But typically, what it used to be before is if you went, um, you know, one to five miles over the speed limit, it was a $5 fine, and then anything above that, you increased it, you know, a dollar per mile. Uh, that is going to be omitted now, and so now it is basically a fee of $20, or $3 for each mile per over the limit, whichever is greater, and an additional fee of $20 would be assessed for a violation of 16 miles per hour, per hour or over, over the limit. Uh, and again, these are changes that are, um, in response to House Bill 1298. Uh, and so I would, uh, stand for any questions that anyone has, and I will also note that there was some changes with regard to, uh, the speed limit on a highway. Uh, that is changed to a $20 ticket, or $5 for each mile per hour over, whichever is greater, and then an additional fee of $20 must be assessed for a violation of 16 miles per hour over or more over the speed limit. So, I would stand for any questions, and city staff recommend approval, and then of course, the chief is in the back, if you have any questions for him as well.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wanko. This is ordinance number 1829. This is the amends and reenacts Section 58-100 in accordance to HB 1298. In regards to speeding and speeding fines. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Wanko or Chief Siani? Hearing no questions, I'll open up the public hearing. If anyone from the public wishes to come forward, please come forward, state your name. Let us know your concerns or questions on the amendment to Chapter 58-100, and that is the speeding fines. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public have any concerns on the amendment to Chapter 58-100? This will be ordinance 1829. Seeing no one from the public has any concerns or questions, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Concerns? Not, I'd look for a motion. We're giving you this one, Commissioner Riddle.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murphy. I had a little delay there to get login, so. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Ms. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And that is the end of the public hearings. We will go back to... Let's see, we got, next up should be the library expansion. Construction GeoTech. This will be presented by Senior Engineer Keller.
Commissioners, uh, for your consideration is a contract with Brown InterTech to provide construction geotechnical services, services for the library expansion. Uh, the GeoTech services include soil observation testing, uh, concrete testing, structural steel observations, and helical pier, uh, observation and testing. These services are essential for proper verification of building foundation and structural installation for the building. Um, the amount will be for, uh, $32,827.50 on a time and material basis. Uh, this work is budgeted and will be funded through private donations and the local sales tax. Uh, the city attorney has reviewed this contract, and the city engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any questions on the GeoTech uh, library expansion, uh, the construction oversight? Any questions, Commissioners? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Keller, you have some sanitary manhole repair, um, construction award.
Mr. President, Commissioners, uh, for your consideration is a construction contract with Flatland Excavating LLC to provide material and construction services for the sanitary sewer manhole repair, uh, for a fixed price of $1,192,437. Uh, the bid opening was conducted electronically by Moore Engineering and took place on August 14th of this year. Uh, the engineer's opinion of cost was, uh, $1.38 million, uh, representing a 13.4% decrease from the engineer's estimate. This bid award is contingent upon the contract or acceptance of, uh, the terms and condition changes requested by the city attorney, uh, as attached in your packet. Uh, this project will be funded by cash on hand, and the city engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any questions for Mr. Keller on this project? This is awarding a contract, a contract for sanitary sewer manhole covers to Flatland Es, Excavating LLC. So, any questions? Not, I'd look for a motion?
Mr. President, move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Keller, you have a water reclamation facility task order.
Mr. President, Commissioners, this is the last one for me, I promise. But for your consideration is an engineering service ta, task order with Apex Engineering, uh, to perform engineering design, bidding assistance, and construction fee services uh, for the following, uh, waste water reclamation facility projects. Uh, there'd be the IFAS improvements, the preliminary treatment improvements, biosolids holding tank, and clarify improvements. Uh, the submitted contract is for $450,250 for time and material. Uh, these, the funding for these task orders will be under the various individual projects listed. Uh, this task order falls under the current master service agreement with Apex, uh, dated January 1st of 2018. The city engineering staff recommends approving this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any questions on this Apex Engineering Task Order? Hearing none, I'd look- Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Barrett?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Thank you.
And then we have our monthly report by Engineering Community Development Director Sklatchet.
Good evening, Mr. President, commissioners. Before you is our monthly report for engineering and community development. Start off with our planning. So ultimately, we've had a, a relatively busy year on, on the side of new development applications. Total of twenty-seven individual development applications. Got the list there of all the different miscellaneous ones that have come through. One notably, as you go below, we've had a total of seventeen lot modification requests already this year, most of which have already been processed and approved internally as a, a staff review and approval. And then six applications for the Dickinson revitalization program. That was a program that was approved earlier with collaboration with Gate City Bank, so good opportunity there to help promote the community revitalization. And in total, we've had thirty-four development meetings. Not all of them necessarily come to fruition to have a, a development application, but most of them do. Moving on to building and codes, we've got the individual permits that have been paid and picked up, both looking at the permit numbers, but also the permit fees that have been collected. And that data is through August twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-five, so as you can see, we're, we're generally ahead in most areas compared to last year. Moving on to engineering, these are the projects that are currently under construction. Water main replacement project, we're showing at approximately sixty-five percent. And Sims, we're just slightly behind on that one, at sixty percent, both of which we currently anticipate to have paved out by the end of September. And so that'll be, that'll be great to have those streets all open back up and, and for service for the public. Highway twenty-two traffic signals project currently showing at forty percent. We are still waiting on the new traffic signal arms from the manufacturer. Those are not in yet, but the temporary signals are, are active, and we haven't had any actual complaints from citizens as of current on, on the traffic operations for those intersections. Twenty-five road maintenance project at thirty-five percent, and working with the contractor on that schedule to try to get as much done before the end of this construction season. Twenty-five lead service line replacement project, have not started work on that one, but we hope to get started in the near future here for the individual lead service lines from the curb stop into the meter in those homes. High school water main extension, we're about sixty-five, sixty percent complete, and looking to wrap that up. It ultimately shows through June of next year. That's because part of the existing high school building has to actually be demoed before one of the hydrants can be installed and a couple other minor attributes can be completed. That's why there's such a long duration on that one. And ultimately, we did officially have the groundbreaking for the library expansion. Moving ahead for projects that are in engineering, one kind of highlightable grouping. We have many projects that ultimately show either a hundred percent or very near to a hundred percent. So that is a great opportunity to start seeing some progress and seeing things done. Many of these projects are ultimately either under bidding now or will be bid out either later this fall or this winter for next year's construction season. And then we do have a number of projects that we've ultimately moved into zero percent complete or, or things that were kicking off right now. So very significant backlog of, of engineering activity and, and working ahead on, on a lot of different projects in a lot of different areas. And then on the geographic information system or GIS, so our, our GIS staff member completed the Geo Database updates. So with the software, there's a lot of things that, the software updates and the, the version update for the software, there's a lot of things in the database that didn't necessarily read the same, so they were pulling from different data sets. So a number of things had to be recoded and, and updated. And then our GIS specialist, he did attend the GIS users conference earlier this, this month, and that was a great opportunity to get to basically talk with a lot of different GIS users, some of the software developers, and how, for example, AI is getting integrated in and, and those kind of things. So good learning opportunity and brought a lot back from that conference. And then we began talks with Eagle View on what exactly the flight aerial, area will be for the twenty twenty-six imagery flight, which is planned for next fall, and, and then looking at some of the upgraded imagery as far as some of the pixel sizes and some of those kind of things, and we are looking at the opportunity for a one-inch pixel size, which is quite amazing. Looked at some of the data that some of the other communities have done. It's, it's quite incredible. You can actually see cracks in the pavement. You can see cracks in concrete and stuff like that. So it's, it's really quite amazing. Lot of our departments throughout the city utilize these services, so so great to see we're continuing to advance and continue to improve the, the systems, the functionality, and the operations and utilization of our GIS system. With that being said, I'd stand for any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Sklatchek or city staff?
Mr. President?
Commissioner Bear?
Mr. Sklatchek, um, you answered a question I was going to ask during commissioner time, and I, I just think it's worth having you repeat it, because sometimes I think public does not always hear everything as we're going down through the list, but it has to do with the Highway twenty-two, Third Avenue West traffic signal replacement. If you could just kind of re- repeat what you said. I haven't had any complaints, but a lot of people asked me about the new lights that were put up around St. Pat's. Is that the final version? I know what the answer is. You just, you just said that, but I think it's worth repeating and maybe just a little bit more detail if you could on that?
Yeah, so if I'm understanding correctly, the, the traffic lights that are currently suspended with cables, those are temporary traffic signals to, to function similar to what the permanent traffic signals will be once they get installed. The, that project in general, like I say, we're just waiting on the actual poles to be delivered. They're still in manufacturing. Unfortunately, there's some delays with the manufacturing on that, so. Did that, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just think that was worth repeating, because I've had numerous individuals ask me about that project, and if that was the final thing, I, I already knew the answer, but I think it's worth repeating.
One thing also, I guess, for the general public, we do have in the specifications for that project, the contractor is obligated to restrict work activities during the morning peak time and the afternoon peak time for the school hours. So that is something we took into consideration for the project. There's restricted work activities occurring during the morning and afternoon times for the school times, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Josh?
Just one, the LIDAR that we had last year flown over, is that available to the public? A LIDAR, that information that, you know, we had the LIDAR that went over the city and then over Patterson Lake. Is any of that information on our website?
I believe that can be made available upon request.
Okay.
But as far as like somehow generally available, where somebody could pull it, I, no, I don't believe that that's just generally available, but it's available upon request, so.
All right. If there are no other questions, thank you, engineering. We'll move into commissioner comments. Commissioners, do you have anything this evening? Commissioner Riddle?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
All right. If there are no comments, then I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. We are adjourned.